I would like to thank you all for taking a few minutes to hear about Girls Inc. and what we've been up to since last year. Still, I guess I'll start with some of the things that we're still all dealing with, which we still are dealing with COVID. We've had a lot of children who have contracted COVID, probably more so than we did the first year it was raging. So it's very much still affecting kids and their health as well as adults. And we also, like everyone else, have been dealing with staffing shortages. So those have been a couple of challenges that we've carried into this year. However, we have been able to thankfully get some new recruits in. So we are very excited about that and some young women who want to work in a field of youth development. And so we've been excited about that. But I handed this out. The top page is a 2021 year review, so you're welcome to look at that. It just gives you a sort of overview of programming at Girls Inc. for 2021. As far as 2022 goes, we're really excited about a couple of things. One is that we've developed a new partnership with Converse Engineering. And so we have volunteers working, doing different programs with our girls, whether it was totally or in-person now. And we have finally ramped up our class to be to do e-learning. We've had, because we are in a downtown building, we had some issues with internet in the building. And some of your parents probably were there. If you've ever had to have a child and it just keeps going down and you're trying to do homework all day, it's just exasperating. So we've been able to at least through a grant ramp up our ability to keep our internet, have a stronger signal in our building. The one thing that I think is exciting that came out of COVID is our Girls Inc. To Go program, which is an outreach program. And it involves girls in, ended up this year, three of our elementary schools. The girls get a to-go bag every Friday. They do all kinds of Girls Inc. mission-related activities. They get a snack and they do that over the weekend and they bring it back on Monday. And it's been a great way for us to engage girls in the work of Girls Inc., girls especially who aren't going to be coming to our center downtown. So that program, we hope will only continue to grow. And then this year's our 50th birthday, which is hard to believe, but our affiliate turns 50 this year. So we're really excited about that. And we're working on some time councils to be open in 50 years. Who knows if we'll be open in 50 years, but we're going to do this, yeah. A couple of things for just that I included, we are requesting a thousand dollars this year. That is what we used to get from the county and it's been decreased over the years. I hope that as you look at why we're requesting it, that you will consider that request when you're budgeting. I know that funds are always challenging. But on the back, I also included our 2023 working budget. This is not our final budget. We've got some grants coming in that we hope will help with this, but this is kind of what we're coming on for 2023. And then I also included some membership data so that you can see pre-COVID, just sort of what the middle of COVID looked like for us and how, especially how much our summer compared with in past three. And then that in 2022, we are starting to creep back up towards those pre-COVID numbers and we hope that we'll exceed those. So we're looking forward to that as well. We, I think the thing that I'm most proud of with Girls Inc. is that we, through all of this, the last couple of years, we've been very creative and resourceful. We've worked on ways to engage girls when we were not able to engage them in person. And I feel like we've been very smart about how we approach the pandemic. So as we move forward from the pandemic, we hope you continue to invest in the lives of these girls. Their world is certainly changing. We don't even know what the world really, I don't think it's going to look like for kids right now, but it's changed significantly. And I always think prevention is a great investment and it's cheaper than investing on the other end. So we hope that, and appreciate that you consider our requests. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Susan, your To Go program, which I was, I was familiar with and I think it's fabulous. Is that in every school? You haven't had any issues with?
It is not yet. This last year, we were doing in-school programming and that, we were told we could not come back into schools until this school year. So that just completely shut down all of that. The after-school programs, some of the schools were just getting, I think, a little overwhelmed with all of the other things that were going on. So it ended up just being three elementaries. It started as five. So this last round was just three elementaries. But we are hoping by this time next year that we'll be in Southwestern, that we'll be in all of the elementaries is our, that's our hope.
And the parents would still sign up for that?
Yes, they still had to enroll in it. And actually, those girls were recommended by the councilors.
Correct.
Yeah. And most, most of them are girls that we've never met before.
Would not take them to somewhere larger school program.
Yeah, yeah. Now, sometimes the nice thing out of that is they end up coming to the center. But yeah, but that typically start out as just an outreach member.
I have a question here. We have a program supply currently, and we're asking two thousand dollars, but there was nothing. So argumentational.
We're just, we're asking the county to help support that. So for your budget, for that specific budget?
Yeah.
We're not. Now, we've brought a lot of grants for programming dollars, so I don't exactly know what that will be, but we're just asking for the county to support specifically a portion of whatever our programming budget ends up in. If you look at our larger budget.
The larger supply, she's by the, by the girls.
Yes, yes. So these are all, we're not asking you for anything except your rent or any expenses. We're not asking for my time. Maybe it's just programs down in elementary, and that's it.
That's why I thought I'd just want to.
Okay. Thanks very much. If you have anything, try to answer your questions.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kellie Bridges, Children's Advocacy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for adding me. And you've previously have worked with Kelly Bridges. She retired in April, so I am the newer executive director. And we also have a new associate director, her name is Jessica Wydom. But in case you aren't familiar with what we do, we are with the first response team when there are allegations of abuse. And we work with a multidisciplinary team, which I must commend, Jefferson County, your multidisciplinary team is amazing. And that includes your law enforcement, detectives, your prosecutors, and your Department of Children's Services. We provide forensic interviews with your youth in the prosecution's situation, moving through court and typically ending up with plea guardians. So that is a success that we celebrate there. And additionally, we offer family and child advocacy services to everyone that comes through our door. That can look like medical referrals should there be a medical need. Also, it will involve counseling or therapy services for the child and family. And we also do some care packages for some of our children that come to the center, do not end up going home that night. So we provide backpacks, luggage, clothing, hygiene products, toys, things of that nature. But as you can see in your folder, we had our record number of cases last year, 637, with the highest number of being Jefferson County, that is by the point of penetration. So we were up last year. And one exciting thing that we are working on this coming year is expanding our prevention program. We know prevention is crucial. It's a difficult part of preventing or even stopping what's happening in these homes or situations. So we did expand last year. We were in Myland, South Ripley, South Dearborn, Batesville, and we added Rising Sun. And we are due to add Decatur County schools this coming year. And we would love to be here as well, in your schools. The downside of this year is that we are funded, we have a diverse funding stream thankfully, but VOKA cuts a lot of CACs through the entire United States, so we're not the only ones. But the cut was pretty drastic and one of the specific things that they cut was the rent that we pay for at the clearinghouse here in Madison, which is where our office is located. Otherwise, it's potentially two to three hours for an officer to travel to our Dillsborough location. And rarely would they go to Decatur, but Dillsborough, you know, it's almost an hour from here, an hour at least for an interview, and an hour back to Madison. So that was an issue. They also cut my current prevention person. He was providing the services in those schools, the ones I listed. They didn't cut that out. There are some other prevention grants that are up for grounds right now. I've already written, I've already submitted. And I've asked, because I have a new hire coming on and it is just a part-time position, but to cover the Decatur needs, it is a state mandate now to have a prevention program in your school. So I'm looking for that amount requested because I want it to go towards expanding the prevention down here and to help offset those costs of rent, which is 14,4 a year for the clearinghouse space. Any questions?
Why are we so high on incidents in Jefferson County?
I actually don't have a statistical research to give you that, but I typically have something to do with income. Those higher stats in lower income areas. Rural, not to be discluded, COVID was not good to our rural folks because of the physical, I mean geographical isolation allowed a lot of things to occur in a lot of instances where the only place that kids were out and about originally were schools. And so a lot of those 2021 numbers were coming from incidents and issues that occurred during COVID when they were doing their schooling at home.
Thank you.
So the school is our best friend in getting help with students to know what's safe, what's abnormal, what they need to talk about. And it's proving to reduce the amount of instances of sexual abuse specifically, and then also preventing it. So kids know when something feels creepy and they go tell someone and it gets addressed.
I think also love the way that our officers at schools, but our law enforcement and prosecutor have good emphasis on taking care of this problem too.
They are paying attention and they are bringing them to us.
That's what I'm wondering of the police officers and things, that the child is feeling safer to come, even to say something to the resource officers in the schools or to the, and that's, and so they're investigating.
And that's exactly why I would love to commend this community and your officers and your law enforcement and the prosecution, because they're doing what needs to be done.
Obviously, like the 2021 count by county rate, I mean obviously these low counties would be counties where your services are not. In Madison counties, five times our county size, there's no way they have two compared to our members. We just, we don't, aren't providing the sort of.
We never turn anyone away. We're 365 days a year, 24 hours, seven days a week. And if something's going on in another county and the child finds it easier to come to one of our locations, maybe they're in foster with grandma or something of that nature, they can come to any of our locations. We never turn anyone away. The typical counties that we see most in Jefferson is going to be Jackson-Jefferson-Jennings. They come here a lot. So Jennings, I have a budget requested with them, Jackson is anyone as well. So some of those, it's the, the one ending in 7, 18, 2002. So those Jackson-Jefferson-Jennings numbers, 169, 1136, and 685, they totaled 1,990. There's more that come to the Madison office, but they're so slight, I didn't put them in. Those are the main, the main people that are visiting our center in those counties.
And no, I know even on your budget sheet, income regarding fundraiser held here locally.
It is in Lawrenceburg. I've been Lawrenceburg Event Center and it's with a Mardi Gras and then occurs in February.
Yeah, and that, that had come up once before a few folks had reached out saying, we want to give and this county wants to support people providing the services here. But it'd be great if more local folks knew about it and or could support you. Most wouldn't necessarily make that drive to Lawrenceburg and or. And at that time, your staff member, or this was probably before you said that there was discussion of trying to do a fundraiser here on this county and I didn't think that would happen.
I don't think anything, I don't think anything has been good over the past few years, but I've already started to diversify the fundraising efforts. It was the first thing that I saw when I got to the CAC in a new position, is that they rely on someone. Fundraiser was dangerous to me. So I already have another, it's July 29th in Indianapolis, Indianapolis Speedway. So we're doing a fundraiser there with our race car driver. And there's more of that to come. And also I diversified my board. And so I do have more representation coming on my board as early as this Friday of residents of Jefferson County that work here and have businesses here. They are very interested in improving our fundraising efforts. And I also have added board members in Decatur who are also critical for taking through my northern folks.
I think that's a great idea. I mean the growth of the cost center, not what we used to consider old cost, but the current cost here, their fundraising efforts local because they've got some local residents to really know the heart of the program and want to go and want to give or help raise money. I think that would be a blessing for.
Yes, the new board members from here, yeah, they're really, really enthusiastic and helpful, so.
Now, you said Jackson County was just starting, but I noticed there wasn't anything listed for Jefferson. They haven't started then.
Yes, I also reached out to Rush and Scott and some more surrounding counties that we're serving. Their numbers aren't huge, so obviously I tried to, you know, address the disparity. I'm not going to ask them for a lot of money if they only send 10 people to me a year. So yes, that's, that's the reason for them.
I just noticed they weren't on the list, so I assumed they were just brand new being.
Being asked. They're not brand new clients, however, they, this is the first time that I've reached out to them. And DCS is going to just continue, they're not re, they're not redoing any of their grants. Their RFP is non-existent this time for us anyways. And so they're just extending it through another two years so that the Department of Children's Services contract will not change.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for your time and it's nice to meet you all. Great to see you. See you later. Thanks, I know, I've been crazy, thanks.
Do you have this in the package of bill rather than, if not, I may call you.
I emailed it.
I have, I have, I have.
Okay. I have it. This is kind of a little dashboard kind of facts and stuff, it's kind of helpful. You'll take one of those?
Yeah, I have it saved.
And the audit was in there too, but I don't want to kind of, as long. So one in three women will be a victim of domestic or sexual violence in their lifetime. And one in three. And those are national statistics, but Jefferson County is not immune to that, far from it. So I'm Mary Mattingly, I'm the Community Outreach Director for Safe Passage, and we are the sole support service provider for this area. Last year, Safe Passage served 83 clients from Jefferson County alone. That was either in the shelter or through our non-residential programming. Non-residential programming is for those who might not need an emergency shelter but do need support in some way. And we had 599 overnight stays from your residents in our shelter. We responded to 150 hotline calls. That's the most of the six counties in the district that we serve. So as you can see, it's not just a big city problem or urban problem, but something that happens in your neighborhood, in your community. With this in mind, Safe Passage is hoping and requesting that you consider about $3,000 for the 2023 to support the direct client services and our mobile advocacy programming for Jefferson County. Our state and federal grants comprise about 70% of the funding. The shortfall is made up through local governments, like yourself, in the district, the private donations, we have grant foundations and fundraisers. And unfortunately, as she had mentioned just a minute ago, the state and federal funding, the VOKA granting is considerably down, so that's impacting some of our services and our planning. Our mission though continues to provide help, healing, and hope, and ultimately build safer, healthier communities for all. So it's not just the third bed, emergency shelter, but there are other services we provide, like we'll help clients, direct client services would be filing protective orders, maybe accompanying them to court, helping with job and housing assistance, children's programming, further education, counseling, support group. And again, it's all free, there is no cost. And it is very critical to have transportation or mobile advocacy as we're requesting for the local survivors so we can take them to shelter, to court, or to the hospital, whatever needs to be done ultimately to move into a new state home, if that's what is going to happen in the plan. And it's particularly important since this is a rural area and public transportation is, is very limited. Actually, I think Madison area has the best public transportation in our area, but it's definitely, you can't take it for granted. The other portion of the request goes to what we call direct client services, and that helps clients with emergency shelter, groceries, fuel cards, court fees, utility deposits, whatever it takes to get their life on track away from violence. The number one reason victims do not leave their dangerous surroundings is resources. Although domestic violence doesn't discriminate, 85% of our shelter clients are low income. And many of you may have read or heard about in the news about the national, the increase in domestic or sexual violence during the pandemic. This district, we saw it, there were eight domestic violence-related fatalities in a two-year period. We think, well, that might not sound like a lot. Typically, you might have one every two or three years. So it's a definite increase. And as far as for Jefferson County, we have two full-time professional staff members. One is bilingual and they work from our satellite office at the clearinghouse in Madison. And since 2015, we've had that local office and it helps better accessibility and convenience for clients and increased awareness. And Safe Passage is an agency member of Jefferson County United Way. And we often apply for grants through local organizations. And we do a lot of presentations through some groups like the Kiwanis or the Lions Clubs, just to increase that awareness. We recently had a successful fundraiser with the North Madison Christian Church. It was called Support with a Fork. Anybody get a, you know, that was really good, did you think? It's really nice that they took that on for us. So at this point, I do want to introduce our new executive director, Carrie Kettman is here. And she has been with Safe Passage in a directorial position for about three years, but the board unanimously selected her in June to replace our retiring executive director, Jamie Moore. And Carrie comes with city and county experience, experience with the courts along with social work. And she's going to talk to you a little bit about prevention and then give you more questions. You go to the higher.
Hello, everyone. Mary covered quite a bit of it. There's a couple key parts that I want to share with you. First of all, to your point earlier on like why the numbers are high in Jefferson County, I do believe that's prosecutor-led here. In fact, Mr. Sutter is a recently joined board member for Safe Passage and we are happy to have him with us through his commitment to the community. Just recently, within the last thirty days, we've had two sexual assault nurse examiners added at the KDH Norton's Hospital, which is huge for this area. Rather than having to take them from this location to Louisville or Indianapolis or most recently St. Elizabeth over in Lawrenceburg. If there's been a sexual assault in your area, we can now seek them to that local facility and have that medical need met here in your community. So that's really important. The other piece is just, just the picture of the shelter. So you hear about these services and you know that we have the shelter facility actually located in Rockland County. That's not the biggest part of our programming. Our biggest part of the programming is our non-residential clients out here in the community, whether they're planning to leave their situation, trying to deal with what they have while they're still in the situation. I almost didn't make it here on time. I was down at the clearinghouse. I had one of our case managers assist somebody with an emergency protective order remotely. So there's a lot of things that we are able to do for the residents here locally. Sometimes people are shelter in Batesville and that's what they associate Safe Passage with. And I just wanted to kind of clear, paint that picture for you guys that we are definitely active. Our two staff that are down here that Mary mentioned are some of our most tenured staff. We are fortunate because, as somebody else mentioned, there's been some turnover in social services and just the great resignation, as you guys have followed the news, but we have been fortunate to have them as a mainstay down here. And those two staff have built a tremendous amount of connectivity with, with your county and also the city. So we are proud to have them on board. And then the last thing I'll mention is we do also have some prevention programming that we are able to support at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I'll just give you an example. I take July 26th, we're scheduled for light white to the Boys and Girls Club during the summer program. We go in and teach some like asset development education with the kids, do some activities that promote healthy relationships at those young, young ages. Because as somebody else mentioned, it's a heck of a lot easier to put resources into prevention than the many resources that are needed by the time you're in intervention. So that's a lot between Mary and myself. I'd much rather answer your questions if you have any. Anyone?
The only thing I would mention, just because it is an entity that many folks here locally are somewhat familiar with, I just recently, I was a little embarrassed because I'm fairly well-connected with such programming in our community. I thought Turning Point was still providing services here and I learned that's not the case. And I was older, but I didn't know that before. So has that had an influx in number of services that you all number, find, you all might see in your.
That's a great question. Turning Point is an excellent colleague of ours, they're just one region over, so we lean into them and they lean into us quite a, quite a bit.
I was gonna say, I never got the impression this conflicted.
Yeah, no, but the strange thing about Safe Passage and Safe Place, which is our sexual assault programming, you don't pass the clearinghouse and see identification, right? Because we're not going to mark our buildings. So some of the challenge with staying confidential, yet getting the word out is making sure that that location's not necessarily advertised because we do have safety risks, but yet still connecting with you guys with fundraising efforts or different efforts, with collaborative efforts, like our SART program that got the same medical to the hospital with David. You know, it's a lot of room out. But we, if either, if somebody from Jefferson County would call Turning Point, how that would work is they would listen to what the emergent need is and then refer them to Safe Passage because we are the service provider for Jefferson County. Again, I talk a lot, so I apologize if that was a, no, it's too long to answer that question.
Because I assume they were still getting calls and.
Right, and vice versa. We will have some calls from their service area. We listen because sometimes with relocation, you just have to listen to the details of the case and know what the best next move is. And our staff is extremely well-trained in order to pivot and get everyone to the right direction that they need to be in. We go in and teach some, like, asset development education with the kids, do some activities that promote healthy relationships at those young, young ages. Because as somebody else mentioned, it's a heck of a lot easier to put resources into prevention than the many resources that are needed by the time you're in intervention. So, that's a lot between Mary and myself. I'd much rather answer your questions, if you have any. Anyone?
The only thing I would mention, just because it is an entity that many folks here locally are somewhat familiar with, I just recently, I was a little embarrassed, because I'm fairly well-connected with such programming in our community. I thought Turning Point was still providing services here, and I learned that's not the case. And I was older, but I didn't know that before. So has that had an influx in number of services that you all remember, that you all might see in your...
That's a great question. Turning Point is an excellent colleague of ours. They're just one region over. So we lean into them, and they lean into us quite a bit.
I was gonna say, I never got the impression it was conflicted with...
Yeah, no. But the strange thing about Safe Passage and Safe Place, which is our sexual self-programming, you don't pass the clearinghouse and see identification, right? Because we're not going to mark our buildings. So some of the challenge with staying confidential, yet getting the word out, is making sure that that location's not necessarily advertised, because we do have safety risks, but yet still connecting with you guys with fundraising efforts or different efforts. With collaborative efforts, like our SART program that got the same medical to the hospital with David, you know, it's a lot of room out. But we, if either, if somebody from Jefferson County would call Turning Point, how that would work is they would listen to what the emergent need is and then refer them to Safe Passage, because we are the service provider for Jefferson County. Again, I talk a lot, so I apologize if that was a...
No, that's too long to answer that question. Because I assume they were still getting calls and...
Right, and vice versa. We will have some calls from their service area. We listen, because sometimes with relocation, you just have to listen to the details of the case and know what the best next move is. And our staff is extremely well-trained in order to pivot and get everyone to the right direction that they need to be in.
Well, thank you very much. And to all three previous organizations, we really thank you for the work you do.
This is a strong community.
We're fortunate, it's much needed.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Brent Spry. I have a second question.
Turn my way over there to the computer. And Dick's going to have to lead this. Dick Goodman, Airborne President.
Mr. Brent Goodman.
Yeah, I'm Dick Goodman. I'm the...
I just knew...
No, you're fine. I'll just stick over to the corner.
President of the Airborne. One of our board members here is Eric Opsen. Eric's a superintendent of the community, but not been here a long time. And he is on our board, he's very experienced. He operated an airport in New Hampshire. He operated a fixed base operation. And he was one of the one deal of the cap for UPS. So Eric brings some really good perspectives to our board. After college, I went to the Air Force as Communications Officer. Came back here in seventy-five. Took my first flight license in nineteen eighty-one and been at it ever since. So we wanted to tell you a little bit, give you some context, just in general, about airports in general. Hopefully, as you consider, withdraw, or think about, you know, you'll give more context as you make decisions. There are thirty-three hundred and ten airports in the United States. And they fall into a number of categories: national, regional, metro, local, and basic. Typically, the regionals are going to be relievers that are serving big cities or maybe an area where it's a long distance to a bigger city, and then it'll be a regional airport that typically has commercial service. And we are a local airport and one of the thirty-three hundred and ten. The important part of that is, to be eligible for federal funding, you need to be part of the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, which they call the NIBUS. And this is how federal funding comes. Funding comes in several types. There's entitlement funding, because you're part of the NIBUS, there's an annual cycle to get. There's discretionary funding, and these are competitive programs where you make a grant application. Typically, they're larger programs, larger expenditures. And then there are special programs. Right now, there's the Build Program, which is a special program that's providing additional funding. And you can't have private airports. Those are pretty rare to be a paid private airport. Actually, used to be one near your home grant. And they ceased to be a private airport and turned it into a public airport. Those are fairly rare. Airports are governed in Indiana one of two ways. If you're a public airport in Indiana, you're either operated by a Board of Aviation Commissioners, which Madison is, or you're operated as an airport authority. And airport authorities have to be voted on and adopted by the populace. So it's a public referendum, and an airport authority has direct taxing authority. And they operate much like a library board, as port authority, that sort of thing. We always operate as a Board of Aviation Commissioners. The city gives us very good support and also supports us with administrative functions. Brent, you want to talk about, this is a county a little bit about airports?
So, size of airports, that's one of the big things. The airspace is one thing, and then the other is the size of the amount of space that you have to have. Currently, the Madison Municipal Airport has three hundred and forty acres. That includes the land that we own, and then also navigational easements that we have, which basically just prevents people from building obstacles in our way. This is our airport, the one that serves our community. Wanted to show a little bit about the capabilities that we have. So these are some of the largest jets that we get in. These are the Gulf Streams. You have, the top right is probably some of the biggest ones. That's called a Legacy Six Hundred. It's typically just a small regional jet that would be, that you would use in airlines. It would have a hundred and thirty-two passengers. Except this one has nice couches, plenty of legroom, and seats about eighteen to twenty people. We also want to talk about cargo. So part of the reason we're here is, we want to talk about, a little bit about some of the stuff that we've been hearing as far as cargo operations. The conversations we've been having and the types of aircrafts that we've been hearing that they're possibly wanting to maybe look at JPG about, or for, it's kind of night and day compared to what kind of cargo operations we have currently. This is probably the most textbook-looking cargo operation you can possibly have out of here. This is probably some of the biggest cargo we've shipped out. Most of the time, it's like milk cartons full of parts and stuff from some of the local factories or even a small five-pound box of O-rings going to Mexico to the Honda plant down there, so they wouldn't shut down. So a lot of times, it's just rush shipment. But we are capable of doing that no problem, and the local companies know that we've done it. I know Mies, Madison Precision, and Arvin Sangho have all flown cargo out. Going to send it back to Dick. We're going to talk about airspace, because that's one of the big issues with the JPG airport and that study that's going to happen. So we want to talk about that.
So this is what the airspace around Madison looks like. And what we've got is the restricted airspace. That's what's listed there is R thirty-four oh three A and B. And then these other colored areas are military operating areas, or MOAs. And this airspace integrates with the Atterbury airspace. So there's an air-to-ground range in the Groovy Ground. There are Air Force people there every day of the week. They have activities most days of the week. They've switched missions from a primary training site to more a scenario-based when they have large exercises. The military, after the Gulf War, adopted a strategy of thirty miles square divided into nine, ten-mile squares. And when they have an exercise, they want to be able to stimulate that. And located in the midst of this is also the Urban Warfare Training Center. And when this whole thing was first conceived, the military wanted to create this large MOA, which is the diagonal piece on the bottom. And originally, they wanted that to go all the way to the ground, which would have been crippling to the regional airports. So at that point, Columbus, Madison, Seymour, North Vernon, Bloomington, Greensburg, Salem, we all got together and met with the military to say, "Look, we need better accessibility to these airports. You're going to shut us off." And so they, at the time, asked Jim Bridgen from Columbus and myself to negotiate a compromise with the military to make sure that we had access to the airports here underneath the MOA and that we didn't adversely impact industry and the communities that we serve. And that was an interesting undertaking. And it all happened because the agent in general directed the Air Force journalists that "You will make this happen." And that's how that came to pass. As you can see, the airspace is kind of convoluted. And Brent, you want to point to where JPG Airport is?
We should make comparison. So this is the Madison Airport, and here's the JPG Airport, and this starts the restricted airspace.
So the military husbands restricted airspace fiercely. To my knowledge, they have never ceded any restricted airspace on a permanent basis. They just don't do it. It's so difficult for them to get it, they just absolutely refuse to give up restricted airspace. And when we needed to build a new approach into Madison...
And there's the restricted airspace there.
And you can see that the orange part is the restricted airspace. And Brent's got a three-D view of that. So from a planning standpoint, this is what it looks like in three dimensions. Except for the thirty-four oh three A goes all the way up to forty-three thousand feet.
Yep. So you're looking at this three-dimensionally. This is the airspace that is over JPG, that's restricted. And this is how high it is. So literally, you're next to a mountain.
From a planning, from a planning standpoint, you have a forty-three-thousand-foot-tall mountain there. And what we were trying to do was negotiate an instrument approach to Madison from the northeast. Because the prevailing wind actually favors landing in that direction. Runways are numbered to the nearest ten degrees of the compass heading to which you're pointing when you land. So our runway two-one, this is the picture you saw earlier, that's going to the southwest. So this is the Jefferson Range. This is the part that the military is using. The darkest part there is the actual pit where the strafing bullets go and where they drop the practice bombs. The lighter areas are areas where they are maneuvering, practicing their attack profiles and approaches into the target range. This is what it looks like out there. They have a tower where they control the aircraft. Before each aircraft's cleared to fire, the range commander will actually say, "Clear to fire." And they will strafe and bomb, and they have a number of simulated targets out there. Well, they're not simulated, they're real. I mean, they'll have buses, cars, and old tanks and things like that that they shoot. So when we went about designing this instrument approach, we needed to incur periodically into the restricted airspace. Because the FAA dictates that you will have a three-mile buffer from the center line of any operation. And that's what those red lines are in the upper right corner. Those are the buffers where they have to make sure that there's no conflicts. And it took us seven years to negotiate our agreement to intermittently use that space under four thousand feet. And that's only on an as-needed basis due to weather and only when the military is not using it. So before any approach has begun, Cincinnati controls the start of the approach, Indianapolis Center controls the airspace, the Air Force owns it, and the missed approach procedure goes to a local approach. So you have to coordinate, they coordinate between all four agencies. And the Air Force will either say, "We don't need that space four thousand feet below right now," or your inbound aircraft needs to hold for fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, until we're done with this batch of aircraft that we have tasked into the range. So that's the arrangement that we finally came up with. And the reason it took so long is, every time we thought we were close, somebody retired, somebody get transferred, the planner, the procedures. Part of the FAA would retire or move on. And we got assigned to one guy, and he said, "Hey, I'm only here three weeks." Well, that really wasn't very helpful. And what finally happened, we were just kind of playing whack-a-mole. And it wasn't until we had congressional involvement, where a congressman went and said, "Enough. Stop with the whack-a-mole, get it done." And that's what brought the seven-year struggle to finally get that approach structured. Picture on the right is physically what that approach looks like over the ground. So you can see Madison down below.
So to kind of clarify, the red dot that's on the right side, that's basically where the airplane would be. But you have to have a protection zone in the airspace on each side. That's what we're calling the buffer. And so if that three miles on each side, even though the airplane's not there, falls within another airspace, such as that restricted, you basically are operating illegally. So we had to, we had to find some sort of an agreement that basically created an imaginary line out there that we all agreed upon. And then basically, it says that if an airplane's coming in there, the range, whoever, like Cincinnati would give you the approach. They would tell you to come on in. And they would, prior to that, they would call the JPG range, and they would say, "Do you have any aircraft on the south end?" And JPG has already talked to their aircraft if they're in the airspace. And they'll say, "Yes, we do, we'll move them north." And then that allows the airplane to go through. That's the only way we've been able to do operations. So trying to build something bigger just south of that, where it's, I mean, I think the north-south runway on the JPG Airport is only about a quarter mile off of the fence before you start the restricted airspace, you're really going to have some problems with that. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of your, ask a question if we get too technical for you, so...
The restricted airspace actually is the old firing line. That's what created the, that restricted airspace was created when the Groovy Ground was operational and they were testing ordinance. So that's what would be. So the issues that you're facing, if you want to utilize, and I don't know what you're thinking about, whether you think about a new or nice general aviation airport, if you're thinking about a large airport to handle large freight. I don't know what you have in mind, or if you're just wondering what options are available to you. When you talk about a small airport, right now, they're building one over in Galton County. They're about seventeen million dollars into that. And that will give them a runway and a taxiway that looks like Madison. Now, the FAA will pay for an airport if there's not one within twenty-five miles. And that's how Galton County came to exist. There was no airport between here and Cincinnati. So the FAA agreed, "We will fund that, and we will build it." So that's where they're... Now, if you get into a large aircraft, like Whiteflies, now you're talking about a single runway costing two hundred million dollars. And typically, they want two runways. And typically, they'll go in a ramp area to park, because seven forty-seven can weigh up to nine hundred thousand pounds. Typical seven fifty-seven, two hundred, typical freight aircraft, weighs a hundred and fifty-five thousand pounds. And they take a lot of fuel. Fueling a seven-five is about fifteen thousand gallons. Fueling a seven-four for a shorter trip for a seven-four, they're going to use about twenty thousand gallons. A seven-four can hold fifty thousand gallons of fuel. So typically, those kind of airports, their fuel's supplied by pipeline. You just can't run that many tank trucks in. I mean, a tank truck of fuel is about seventy-five hundred gallons. So it takes two tankers to fill up one seven fifty-seven.
We also wanted to share some costs of the airport, just our airport, to let you know. So you may be able to read this. So right now, we've got snow removal equipment that we're looking at. It's probably going to be around anywhere from three to four hundred thousand dollars, what we're looking at. It's changed since this was put out. We have the obstruction removal, so tree removal, all that. We're looking at a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We're looking at about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars on our apron reconstruction project. And then eventually, it gets down to, it's two-point-seven, two-point-seven million dollars, I think, is when the full apron gets repaired. What an apron is, is basically where the airplane's set. So this is the most recent one we did a couple of years ago. So what we did was, we took out the asphalt, and then we put in eight inches of concrete, which will hold around a C-one-thirty. That project right there, just that little section, was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And the reason these get so expensive is, to get the soil stabilization that you need underneath that, they had to dig down between three and four feet and actually incorporate dry cement powder into the earth to get the compressibility of that ground high enough to bear the loads that they're expected to be able to hold. One of the things that is of interest is airplane tires and airplane loading is much different than highway. And when you have, even the kind of aircraft that Brent was showing you there, they might weigh seventy thousand pounds. So you've got seventy thousand pounds going at about a hundred and forty miles an hour, and the wheels aren't turning. And when that seventy thousand pounds hits the runway, the wheels have to spin up. It's a tremendous load on the wheels and a tremendous load on pavement. And even asphalt runways are made with a different mixture of asphalt in a road. That mostly has to do with the expansion contraction, but also the loads that these tires put on the pavement is just mighty loud.
And this is, this is the big fancy technical part of a pavement control number versus an aircraft, aircraft control number and all that. So airplane tires can be super skinny with really high pressure, and they put a lot of PSI on a small space. And then you can get the big tires, like on a C-one-thirty, where it displaces, you know, think of your trucks and everything out on the road. You get the big tires, you try to displace it. The big dump trucks add another tire to displace that weight a little bit. So we don't really get that option. So they're designed a certain way, and then we got to make the pavement either work... So they're designed a certain way and then we've got to make the pavement either work for them or we tell them to go away. We've been asked if we can get a 747 to land or something at Madison. I always tell them, "Once." And part of the reason is, it won't hold it. So these are not our airport, but this gives you an example of why it's very important to have the right kind of pavement. Because just like with this FedEx aircraft, he got off just a little bit too far and went into the asphalt and went right through it. And that's a very expensive, long day. We've had a couple of aircraft just get in the grass a little bit and it was two days, you know, worth of getting them out and clearing the landing gear and all that sort of stuff. So want to talk.
You have got a picture of the pavement?
Go back to this one?
No, then you have a picture of the pavement.
Oh, yeah. So want to show, so we're talking about our capabilities real quick as far as, we just want to talk about the cargo portion. So the feeder aircraft that we were talking, well, we'll talk about. So this is a feeder aircraft. Basically what it does is it's a smaller aircraft that comes and picks up boxes and takes it to the larger hubs. They have these in Greenwood. They typically keep these out of the larger airports. So this will pick up smaller, just smaller packages. This is something that we could do today. This is something that we have the capabilities. These aircraft, we have the capability of landing no problem. We have the fuel to take on, to basically fuel them. And it really would just be down to getting the businesses together to see if they have enough to ship. Additionally, just to kind of give you an idea, there's the feeder aircraft down there at the bottom. And then that's kind of the conversation we've been having, with people saying, "Well, can you land this?" It's a big difference. The middle aircraft can land at our airport, but the big one doesn't. So we want to get, another idea here too. This is just the taxiway at Indianapolis right now. And that's where we got our numbers from. One of our engineers is one of the engineers that is doing this. But this is just the taxiway. This is not the runway. The runway is about twice as thick. And it was, I think they had projected it was going to be around 180 million and I think it came out a little bit more. It's about 220 million? 220 million?
That's for one runway.
For one runway. So if you're talking about that size of a cargo hub, you've got basically your, well, you're going to have, if you go through JPG, the big thing is you got airspace and you got to get funding. And then additionally, you're going to have to build things this size if you're talking about those size aircraft. And we have a perfectly capable airport that we can start the process if you want, you know. We're here to basically answer any questions that you have. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make the last few meetings. So we want to be able to talk to anybody that has any questions.
Also, another thing that comes along with the airport, when you get federal funding, you sign a grant and the grant contains various conditions, which they collectively refer to as the grant assurances. And the biggest grant assurance that you're signing is that you will operate that as an airport for 20 years. And if you want out of that, then you've got to pay back all the money that you paid. So that's just, you know, there are strings attached when the federal government gives you that 90% to pay for these things. They pay 90%. Typically the local match is 5% and the state pays 5% when they've budgeted enough money. If they haven't budgeted enough, then that falls as a local share. We had one year where we had to pay 7.5% because the state just didn't allocate enough funds for all the airports in the state for the matches. So in terms of the issues that you're facing as you consider an airport, the biggest one's military, you know. And you're asking them to give up three miles of that restricted airspace if you seriously think you're going to build an airport there. And that's going to be a difficult ask. But actually you've got to convince the FAA that it's worth funding another airport that's close to one that's already there. Or they might just say, "Well, buy that one out and build yourself a new one." The next thing is, you know, about your customer base, depending on what kind of airports you're trying to build. If you're considering a large freight operation and that's 700, 800 million dollars it's going to cost, now you're competing with Royal, Cincinnati, Indianapolis and Wilmington, Ohio. They already have these facilities. Wilmington was a VHL facility, they moved out. Amazon has moved in. Amazon is also operating on Cincinnati. So that's kind of the big airport competition in the area and then the smaller airports that are, say, that are basically 25 miles. So if there are any other questions, we're just trying to give you some context. And if you want to pay a lot of money for a study, fine. I'd say before you do that, I give you a phone number of the Air Force to call and I give you a number of the FAA to call and just run a flight poll with them. And then if they say, "Oh, that sounds good to us," then by all means, take it away. But I think short of getting by into those two critical organizations, you probably could find better things to study to do with money at JPG. It's an exciting area to do something. And obviously anything that fits the community, we're 100% behind. But I just want to give these caveats that this is the reality of trying to build an airport. They take up a lot of space. Physically, say Wilmington's 2,000 acres. Indianapolis is 6600 acres. Louisville's small, Louisville's 1500 acres. They take up a lot of space. And the airspace around it is very convoluted. I hope this gives you a little insight into what's involved with an airport. You got any questions for any of the three of us?
Super presentation?
Very wonderful presentation.
Hopefully it's helpful.
The second time through, it sinks in a little bit better.
Well, we also tried to pad it a little bit from all the technicalities there.
Yeah, yeah, probably too much detail. I'm going to clear my trading and kind of drift off into that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I left my cards. If anybody has any questions, you're more than welcome to come out and definitely take an airport tour if you want as well.
Oh, we're having the Aviation Association of Indiana Quarterly Meetings at our airport Thursday. So they have quarterly meetings. There's three quarterlies and there's an annual meeting. And all the, a lot of the airports will send representatives and a lot of the planners, the state. The feds from Chicago normally only come down to the annual meeting. And we had one annual meeting several years ago. We had it at Valteria that we hosted. So we've been pretty active in the Aviation Association of Indiana.
So what time is that?
It's all day on Thursday, yeah. Starts at 9:30.
Thank you.
And we also have an airshow September 24th. It's always fun.
Next we have Adam Holmhorn?
He's not here. He's unfortunately couldn't make it.
Hey, Commissioner Brenner?
So, I mean, if we were just looking at studying the airport, I'd say, "Well, I guess we're over." But that's about the fourth of the study of what we're going to look at at JPG. We've got a few other things. Adam's part in it. I mean, we've got someone who wants to do good stuff with the railroad and we've got a place that, we've got road access. When we look at airport stuff, we probably will look at it, we won't throw it away. There's a lot of vertical takeoff and landing things that are evolving right now that, I think I sent you a story about FedEx. They're going to test these cargo vertical takeoff. So there's some other opportunities out there that wouldn't approach upon the airspace. At least not flying over the restricted airspace, but we'd have some opportunity there. But we don't, you know, we don't know. These things are changing so quickly that, while I understand it's a lot of money, but we don't get this opportunity. I don't know if we'll ever get this opportunity again. We had it once and we just, for whatever reason, I don't know, we wanted to pass on it, but we were forced to pass on it. And now we have an opportunity to really see what are the possibilities out there. And if in the study we find things that will work great at the Madison Airport, we're not going to, we're not going to throw those away. We're not going to hide them. We're going to give them to them, you know. It is for this whole area to let's see what we can do with these resources and make something good out of them because, except we don't get these opportunities very often. I don't know if we'll ever get this opportunity again. But, you know, it's got a wide number of assets there that we would like to be able to utilize or at least see if we can utilize them. I don't know that we, you know, we've talked about cargo, but probably not on the scale that a Cincinnati or Louisville or an Indianapolis would carry, obviously. But smaller, could it be a smaller regional jet maintenance facility? Don't know, but we don't know until we investigate. So if you have any questions on the study.
What did the feds come back with on the study?
Well, we only got one reply on it. I sent it out to four different groups. He's still working on the final budget. It's a request for qualifications. What kind of studies have you done? Because I have no experience in writing. All right, this is the scope of the study that we want. I would be drastically short or over. I don't know. It depends on which way you want to go. But we've got someone who's done these kinds of studies. He's got a team that's looked at all the different assets that are out there that is going to evaluate those and see what is the possibility. And, you know, we're right about Indianapolis. I mean, Indianapolis is far sooner than they ever expected. FedEx is paying the big bill there. Do they have some other things they want to look at? I don't know. And I understand it's probably not a federal project. The county's not paying for it. I'm not, I don't think, I don't ever think I've come up here saying, "We're going to build a Jefferson County Airport." It's too expensive. Got to be a private, got to be somebody out there that's looking for a place that they can use and not worry about. Fix it when they need it fixed and not interfere with others. Any questions for Nick? I have a proper, working feeling. About the study, well.
And did you have any info back on the party days right now?
So they ran into a little bit of a hiccup with some funding. But we do know that there's still some opportunities that they're just not going to know right away. So we're still pursuing it. I think because of some federal funding requirements, we may ask for a little less than what we initially did. But avoid some federal strings that would be attached if we get that. So I'm pretty sure we're going to put that money into the county because since we ran into $10 million, that money will go in there and then we could use that for funding this.
Hey Dave, how much discussion have you had with Adam on the Madison Railroad?
So I talked with Adam at the Real Estate Roundtable in June. Told him that we were looking at studying. And he was, he was interested in it. He thought that that would be a great way to expand more of what the railroad opportunities there. He's, I think they're in the process of rehabilitating a couple of bridges so they can carry more freight. But, you know, he was explaining, they've got 45 minutes or whatever. Anyway, to North Vernon and there was a CSX line and they can go pretty much anywhere in the country from there. So if there are things that can be useful in that. But he was, intermodal is probably going to be the thing that would come out of this. You know, is air involved? It might be. I mean, it could still not be with the other opportunities. The interstate, you know, and if the interstate from 7571 gets put in, we have a little quicker access to a couple of other metropolitan areas than we would go in the other way.
Wouldn't the private entities have the same challenges that these gentlemen talked about?
With, I mean, there's. I mean, if it's plain, yeah, it could be there. But once again, the study is looking at a number of different assets that are not just the airfield, so.
So my thoughts are, if there's any cargo, you know, if the Madison Airport is able to supply that for the county, we might as well utilize the, you know, what we have in our community and look at, you know, rail and studying that use. You know, maybe putting some thought and studying that, that would be my suggestion.
That's part of the study. Again, it is the assets there has given us improvement. The airfield is kind of the big one to see, but the rail, truck. I don't think anyone at River Ridge had had that idea on how big it was going to be without doing the study. They had some hopes and dreams and maybe could be. East End Bridge is going to be a plus. But I don't think anyone would have thought about fourth or fifth fastest growing place economically in the country. And now they've got some extra things that we don't have. They don't have rail as much as, I don't see much of it going on there, so. They're doing some benefits there.
Just an overarching comment. If anything, if the council working with commissioners decides to earmark some money for this study to see the possibilities at JPG, I would almost even suggest, as silly as it sounds, changing the name of this discussion because this is a chunk of money and this is more money than I am comfortable spending when it is perceived by our community and called an airport study. Because as you have mentioned, and we're quick to defend it's more than that. So for me to buy into saying, "What can JPG give back to Jefferson County? How can we utilize that what once was a resource for this community? How can we tap into that again?" If the air portion in your statement is that may be a small portion of that, I'd just assume we stop calling it even an airport study. I know that's maybe.
We can use what the Jefferson Truman Ground Strategic Planning and Marketing Study.
Yeah, just, you know, obviously all of us, if that community member say, "You're going to spend how much on that, you know, when we already have an airport?" So, yeah, even moving forward, I'd assume we cannot even call it an airport study if we want to support the airport that we have.
Sure, I mean, if they would be on board and part of the study, I'm more than happy to have people on the Madison Airport Board involved in the study. I've never said, "Oh, no, 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 it's just us," you know.
I mean, I'm more in the opinion of keeping it an economic development.
That's what I was going to say. We actually have renamed it as an economic development.
Sure, they're going to ask where you're looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
To be honest, it may be that they find even more than that. Obviously, my husband goes into a lottery to hunt out there. That's not economic development, but that is recreational at Webster Wood and O'Carroll's Conservancy. I mean, that is a treasure out there. Not every step of the acreage can be utilized.
I mean, tourism is a part of the study too.
Yeah, exactly. It's a JPG study, not even, I mean, although I know I was the first one even less than ready to say the same thing. I'd be more inclined to spending some money to explore. It is an economic development option, but even just as staying a potential for the Jefferson Burry Ground.
I mean, camping is driving me crazy right now. I think there's, I'm going to look. I think there's maybe three, the remnants of three or four spots. I know they have more out there, but, you know, that's part of the infrastructure I think out there is, you know.
It could be even residential opportunities still.
Sure.
Average residents never seen the watch or even knows where it is. I mean, it's.
That's a historical thing that we have in our community that is not used.
And discussions with Dean Porter, he's open to development. He's just been waiting on this, buying this time until someone comes.
And that was the only other question I had. I was curious to see if anyone had reached out to him.
No, no. No, he's thought he'd be okay with it. Is it yours or is it mine? We have to talk to him.
As a, personally as councilperson, I'd like to meet with Adam of Madison Rail. I was hoping he'd be here tonight.
I hope he was here tonight.
But I think we should, before we invest any money in economic development or a study, I really think we need to talk to him or have him, you know, let's, I think, that's my recommendation, that we have a discussion with him.
I agree.
And are we still open to other avenues for the money? Possibly?
Well, it would have to be voted one way or the other.
Well, it would have to be voted one way or the other. I think it's on the agenda to be voted for the S5 economic development as 500,000.
I'm pretty sure you said last time you didn't have to vote on it if you did want to.
No, we didn't have to vote. It can be tabled, it can table. I'm just saying that that's how it's listed right at the moment and that's how it was advertised, so it can be knocked past and so forth.
But I think of where it could be reappropriated later, David, if we could.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're going to have some left over in stormwater management for the plan for the county because of the fund less than when they put in there. So we're going to have some funds there that we can move to other opportunities. I haven't got the final number from the board.
Another one, not bid that's come back, but interest, interested party who would be going to help look at this as a study, I think you mentioned the word request for qualification versus a formal bid.
He's, he's working.
Yeah. It's still just saying a number is also helpful to know that it may, you know, we might be willing to invest $80,000 to really see all the potential that JPG can give. That may be a little easier pill to swallow than, again, to especially an average person thinks that we're ready to go and $500,000 for an airport study. And we know it's more than that. So to see the amount, how much that study would cost would be helpful.
Sure. And, you know, at the last RDA meeting, Ready Two is coming next year, and they also said that if some of these projects don't get to a point, those that were approved are ready to go and other people have a plan and they're ready to go, those can step in. So that's.
Those funds can be used in that manner.
Right. So I think getting some additional funding is going to be a possibility. It's just going to take a little longer than I initially hoped, but, you know, when they hand you $50 million and say, go find a way to spend it and you've never done it before, well, there may be some issues. And the state has said, wait a minute, you have to do it this way.
Yeah. What does that mean?
Yep.
Well, yes, sir. I guess the last thing I can think of, it was not a question before now, but just a comment, somebody mentioned task force. Knowing that this is a chunk of money and the commissioners have had to put a plan in place, you know, when this money kind of fell from the sky, so to speak, and needing state suggestions slash requirements, and that's not easy. As you said, what you do when you win the lottery, but when big time go bankrupt because it's not so easy necessarily to spend. With that said, is, I would think it's a good idea for this particular subject to form some type of task force, to have rail involved, to have a representative from the airport involved, to have a representative from, yeah, and even from maybe, you know, a Bobby Phillips, you know, with his inside expertise and even from the recreational piece of things, you know, the Liz Brownleys that are, know that acreage and what it's used for and which part we really should protect and which part maybe volunteers have worked for years to protect. I don't think that's a bad, you know, and with the historical piece of it, forming a task force is not a bad thing with this particular project.
Yeah, that is cheap too, right?
Yeah. Task force members are volunteers, but they have a passion and a vested interest in, in the subject.
So I'm all in with that. If you put a formal motion, I'll second it.
I don't know if that's necessary, but, I mean, I really would. I think each entity of this spending of money, you know, we've had some good discussion and just vote yes.
I don't want to step on your toes, but probably since it's, it's coming through us, the commission is probably on a point to task force.
Yeah.
You guys, you can encourage us, we'll.
Sure. And suggestions can be sent to you.
Would you consider the airport, somebody from that board as well as the.
Sure. I didn't sit here and say I was going to invite him and then turn around and say, forget you. I'm just sure where all this is going from. I mean, I would, I would wish, and I don't know, maybe it's from teaching, but I wish people would reach out and ask questions because not, no one's come to me and asked me questions.
I know, task force thing just popped in my head.
No, 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 I understand about that, but I mean about the whole study and everything, you know? Or to get carried on, then it just, an, an airfield study is, you know, I mean, this would show that it's not. I'm, I'm happy to share the proposals. I've shared it with every one of you, so at least the scope of work. You don't have to hold the eggs and all that too, but.
I still think we need a little time, a little bit of time.
Sure. Well, I give, make some time to put together some numbers on it.
Exactly.
And we've got some ideas, but you don't want to, want to make sure, so.
Want to be sure that we're doing what we should be doing. You know, it's kind of like the task force that was developed for the internet and the things, you know, and so forth and, and so forth. And they even was at the fairgrounds and, and was talking to people. They, they, that was, that was the best public thing that I think that, that, that they could get out. You know, they were there and they were speaking with people and they were talking to people and they got to talk to, you know, hundreds of people about, you know, how is yours, where you're living and where you're living and where you're living. You don't have to be on fairgrounds very long to know that it isn't working. You know, so I think.
Pull your phone out and see.
Yeah, yeah. That was a good thing to have them, the, the task force there. If you have a committee, as she is saying, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
So do we motion to table it? Motion to table it?
I would, yeah.
All favor?
Move and table it.
Who do you think, who on the team for the study? Do you want to hear more about who's on the team that's going to do the study?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Of course, I appreciate your time coming here.
I'm from Cincinnati.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Just a couple of things, you know, a few things about what we envisioned after, you know, working with Commissioner Bremer on developing our proposal and qualifications. You know, a little bit of background, you know, I lead up the aviation planning group for Crawford, Murphy and Tilly. And I fully, you know, agree with the statement you made about the misnomer being an airfield study because really the study is a lot more. You know, the overall study boundary that we're working with, the assumption is almost 5,000 acres. And Mr. Governor, you said it best when, you know, this county ought to spend their money on figuring out what, something better to do with the, the asset that's out there. And I don't believe you're wrong. I believe you're pretty well spot on. Aviation is one little piece of it that we're going to look at and part of my job sometimes is to talk my client out of doing something. And I have done that in the past. So again, as part of it, we're going to look at the aviation pieces of it and potentials. And the answer may very well be that it's not good for all the reasons you both mentioned and you brought up a lot of great points and I liked your presentation. I might steal some things for other things and the way you presented some things. So, yeah, I really agree with a lot of what you did say in terms of the hurdles that are out there and you're, you're right. But we, we do have some team members on and, and for study that we've done the proposal, we have a specialist at Indianapolis to focus on recreational tourism development and they're going to perform a market assessment for that. And then part of that is to identify what those potential recreational and tourism uses may be, what the return on investment might be, how long that period might be and what the ultimate look and feel of that study might be so that we can then. Another specialist we have on the team is at St. Louis. They're going to focus more on the commercial development, what might an industrial complex on that site be? What could some of those uses be? Then we also have a specialist on the team that's going, you know, going to look at the air cargo piece of it. They've done work at all, you know, air cargo hubs all over the world. And what we would take to bear fruit there and why that may not be the, the case or even possible. My team will look at, you know, some of the aviation planning pieces of it. And like I said, a lot of the things you mentioned or everything you mentioned is you're spot on and those are some hurdles that we'll have to look at and not even feasible to overcome. So, you know, a lot of the things we'll look at, but, you know, again, the aviation piece is very small and like you said, you know, what's the best, highest and best use for that facility? Have that asset, that massive asset out there. You know, it just happened to have been an airfield at one point. Whether it will be again, I, I, I don't want to, you know, presuppose, but I will say there are significant hurdles, as you've heard, for that to be the case. But there's a lot of other things that we're going to look at that's part of the study. Aviation is very small. So again, we do have a lot of the specialists on board and, you know, I, I will happily answer any questions you might have. We are working on finalizing the scope of work and we're going to get a draft up to Commissioner Bremer here in the next few weeks. And then once we kind of agree on what that scope is, we'll develop that cost estimate and F estimate for the study and get down to a final number. So, any questions though?
Do you have an idea how cheap you could do this day?
Unfortunately, nothing's cheap anymore. But, you know, it all depends on the level of detail and the, and how much we really want to, you know, dive into the weeds and also the envelope of the area that we're going to need to consider. So those are, those are two of the big factors. So you, you don't know that right? I, I don't want to presuppose yet.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is this something that could come down within a month or six weeks or two months?
The cost set, the F estimate? I would be hopeful considering if we can get to where we feel comfortable on the scope in the next few weeks, I would say a month or a month to six weeks is very reasonable.
And we'll get to a bunch of time and hopefully.
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Transfers and additions?
Okay. Can we just take it from there? Okay. So we have one transfer and it is Troy. It looks like travel to fuel. So I'm assuming this fuel line is needing funds to fill up the truck. He's wanting to move $500 from 1,000, 022, 0322 to, actually, move that backwards. It needs to go. Is that right?
You're saying it needs to go from travel to.
It's from, no, it's to travel from fuel.
Oh, it's to travel from fuel.
Which is what I thought was odd. I said it backwards the first time. Let me look at their, let me look at their actual written because that seems like a weird.
The intent is from travel to fuel.
From travel to.
If you wanted to go from.
So I said it correct, but it's on here backwards.
You wanted to actually go to fuel.
So it's from two.
It's from.
It's from travel, which is 1,000, 022, 0322, 500 dollars to fuel 1,000, 022, 0215.
I moved it.
Say it again.
All favor?
Okay. My next additional is Sarah had submitted this. It's for Coombe Courthouse. So the first line is 1,114001, 0341, property and liability insurance. That is the amount we need to shore up the account from the increases in property and liability and due to the major increase in cybersecurity insurance. The next line, 114001, 011100, is general repair and that is 25,000. Sarah actually sent us a little.
She sent something, yes.
Yeah. So the, that's to get us basically through the end of the year because we have a balance right now of 7,231 dollars and we have current projects going on of 7,500 ADA ramp at the annex and 18,000 dollar other incidentals for repair throughout the year. And then the.
She does know where that explanation is. That's what she's estimating.
That's what she's estimating for the end of the year. And then if it's not used, it just remains in that fund.
And that's 20,000, 25,500.
500, right.
Right. And then the next line is 1140001, 0441 and that's the additional building expenses at 215 Lagrange. So that is the additional 100,000 that was not, well, it's 95 for that and then ends up being a total of 97,300. It's the additional expense that was not covered under the art money and then inspections that we had to pay in advance for that closing.
I motion, all favor?
I'll second.
All favor?
Okay. The next is Coombe Cap Development, which is 1138, 001, 0346, courthouse repair of equipment for 29,000. That, you know, what was the.
What was the equipment? 29,000.
It is for the.
Is that the, like the recognition or? I mean, that's not the. I don't think we got anything else besides, I, I didn't find anything else that's any other year value on that.
Let's skip that one right now. Because that was not included on her little.
You don't have it included.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, you have it. Courthouse, this courthouse repair, 29,000 from Coombe Cap Development. Was that a contract, if I'm sorry?
Might be on the air conditioning.
That's what I'm thinking of.
No, take that back. The heat where they need two boilers repaired or redone.
I think so.
I'm, I'm thinking you talked, you said something to me about something that was repair and everything, but I didn't get it. There wasn't anything else on this sheet that except 29,000.
General repair. Okay, we have a text in on that one. Let's skip down to county general. I can't explain this. County general, 1,000, 005, 0221, gasoline. The sheriff's department needs $60,000 to finish off the year. The next line item they are asking for is 1,000, 005, 012601. They actually applied for a second grant. They have operation pullover that we already budget the money for the overtime that is required during that time period. And this is called a SAVE grant. And what it actually is, is school safety zones and it focuses on school zones and it focuses on school bus safety arm violations. So we've already received them, well, it's a reimbursable grant. We have to pay that money out, but then it'll come back into county general to refund this.
And we have notification that they were.
It was already. Yes. They actually, I think, had to have it all spent by June 30th, I believe. So the money is already spent, yeah.
I think you mentioned that.
They started this in the spring and they're hoping to apply for this every year. It's kind of a new grant that runs aside OPO.
Is this at 60,000? Is that just a ballpark figure here? So he may have to come back or he may not have to come back.
I think this is what.
Are we totally out at the moment?
We are not totally out, but this is what he is assuming for the rest of the year.
We just keep in mind because it's in here that we don't like move it someplace else by the end of the year.
Right.
Just, I think my guess is, yeah.
I'll make the motion to pass that transfer.
All favor?
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
It's not transfer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
It's additional.
I'll make the motion to pass the additional.
I really don't think the gas will, they'll give it to you at the end of the year.
I don't either. That's what, that was my thoughts there too, but.
And I was trying to pull up the.
I talked to, I talked to Joe.
He's hoping that will, but.
Well, I guess I might have to come back to us, but I mean, I'm saying, that was my question. Will it get us through to the end of the year?
We tried to estimate it.
I mean, because it was not, they were figuring, when they figured that in the budget, the gas wasn't, that one handful sold more, less than per gallon.
Right. And they could increase that.
You couldn't, you couldn't have any idea, no.
He did not email his budget back to me and I would have been able to see June's. He, he delivered it. So I don't have that on hand.
We will, we should have it at budget time so we will know that.
Yeah, I can email you in the morning what's actually in gasoline right now.
I, I'm like you, Pam, I don't think they do. I don't see them.
They can come back, I guess.
He can come back, he can come back, you know. He can come back, he can come back, you know.
They're trying to do some different things to try to curb driving.
Yes.
Or do you guys want to vote on that one?
On the...
We did.
We did.
On the gasoline. There was a vote on it, okay.
Yeah, there was a vote.
I was the sound.
Gary and Pam.
I think I tried, I kind of paused.
Just pause, right.
I motioned and then, I don't know who's second. Okay, Gary.
Well, I, I made the motion.
I should, and I thought Pam had said her motion. That's when I had, when I voted down.
So we did vote on it, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
No, not an actual vote.
Not a poll.
All favor.
Okay, as an appro, as an appro, as an appropriate, yes.
Okay, um, we have an additional of five thousand dollars into one thousand zero two one zero two two two, which is a veteran servicer, veteran service officer's budget and it is a line item called outreach. This is the five thousand dollars that the city of Madison granted, um, that office and they are wanting to appropriate it so they can spend it.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
She does an excellent job.
Yes.
I talk to her frequently and work with veterans in my office.
Thanks to Madison for, for, you know, giving her credit.
Yes, and I'd make a little PSA, obviously very related. If you know of any veterans, encourage them to come the second Friday of the month to the clearinghouse upstairs, not downstairs. The same time on Friday House, the pantry hours are taking place, but I'd participate and I'm there each month in the Veterans Appreciation Event. Purdue actually made a commitment to that starting entire calendar year. It was last November through this coming November. And starting this next month, Purdue is sending there some students down to shop for free screens and the numbers are extremely low. We're seeing, um, free up to seven or eight veterans a month is all. Um, and there's amazing free resources. There's some incentives and giveaways as long as they engage and chat with resources there. Faith obviously is there, just about every month. Um, if you know of any veterans, please encourage them to come to the clearinghouse upstairs, the main, just off the main lobby, second Friday of the month from nine till eleven.
And they might feel more comfortable coming there and then if there's a problem, they can refer for a point.
We'd love to see them.
Anything else from the public?
Did we do the tourism? No, I'm gonna do that. Um, so for commu, convention and tourism, um, this was voted on by the Jefferson County Board of Tourism, which is Fund seven three zero four zero zero one zero three zero three. This is professional services and the contract between Jefferson County Board of Tourism and Visit Madison had been updated for this additional twenty-two hundred dollar fee. I'm not sure what, uh, the additional services that they agreed upon was or that created this. Uh, Curtis actually turned this in, which he is, um, the treasurer of the board.
Yeah, so it's the Inkeepers' Hacks.
Right.
Inkeepers' Hacks, that was my question.
Yeah, this is all Inkeepers' Hacks money, but it updates the contract with Visit Madison.
Motion, you approve.
Okay.
I'll second, all in favor?
Do we want to go ahead and do the Coombe Cap?
Yes, because we have our answer now.
Okay.
Um, she is going to look at her email and send you, but, um, they have, she's got about six thousand dollars left, so some of it was extra to have. Some of it was going to the ADA grant for compliance. Um, and she said there was a couple of other things. She's gonna look at her email for it.
Who's she?
Sarah.
Sarah, Sarah.
All right, okay.
I move that we, we permit it from the Coombe Cap Development because there will be, there's some handicap things that I know have to be straightened out and done that are, that have to be approved.
I'll second that.
This is the, just clarify, this is the twenty-nine thousand.
The twenty-nine thousand.
One thousand zero three four six.
All in favor?
Okay, now on the back, um, I worked with Lindsay to come up with, she's going to transfer it to, we had created a separate fund for her animal shelter donations and she has yet to tap into that resource. She is going to do that now. Um, that fund is four one zero three and we are asking to appropriate, um, five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars that had been donated specifically for spay and neuter. Um, and then in account number four one zero three zero zero one zero one one two zero zero, this was money that had been donated specifically for, um, rabies vaccinations and general medical expenses that would occur at the animal shelter. And those amounts are five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll approve it.
We're jumping on it.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, and then she also needed to appropriate, um, money in the animal shelter fund where, um, adoptions had occurred, that money had came in. We need to appropriate it to the line to pay out for the, um, spay and neuter certificates and, um, rabies vaccination coupons. And then she also needed to appropriate money to equipment, which she's had some, um, equipment issues up there. So she was asking for five thousand in spay and neuter, uh, one thousand three hundred in rabies vaccinations and then nine hundred dollars in equipment.
Motion, you approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, our last area.
Before you go on to that, I have an add, I want to ask, can I ask an animal question, animal shelter question?
Yes.
Um, I've watched some of the, the videos and the stuff and they're talking about, there was a building, new building donation fund and that I know that some of them are wanting to use it for something and that is, that legal to be used for something that is not, that it was put, specifically put in there as a new building? Can that legally be done, be, be used for something else?
It depends on if, at the time that fund was created, if the board actually had a ordinance drawn up saying what the specific use was of that.
And you don't have any record of that?
I do not. I have not seen something of that nature.
I know that all those five Ks and all that sort of stuff that they did and everything, that was set up to go, to be a new building.
Right, and that is, I believe, I can't remember if it said new building or if it says building fund. It says building fund in the system. So I'm not sure, um, and I guess at this point of...
I thought that was change. I thought she, that Jenny had changed that, that specifically say that it was a new, the new building fund at one time and I don't know whether it ever got changed or not. That was several years ago.
Right, I, I'm not certain. I can do some research and also have, um, Erica maybe do a quick search to see if she had anything in Commissioner Minutes where that was created specifically for that and if there's an ordinance that goes along with it.
I don't know that there was an ordinance. I, I'm just saying there's a lot of people that donated to that thinking it was building. And you know, I just want to be sure before they use it for something else that we're not stepping on some toes there that shouldn't be stepped on.
Okay, so the next area is ARPA funds. Um, it's Fund nine one one two. Um, we advertise one point one million dollars for fire departments, which would then entail Madison Township receiving one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. Breakers Ridge receiving one hundred eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Deputy receiving one hundred and four three seventy. Hanover Township receiving one hundred and twenty-seven three forty. DuPont receiving one hundred and eighteen five ninety-eight. Canaan receiving one hundred seventeen and seventeen dollars. Kent receiving one hundred and eight eight thirty-four. Milton Township receiving one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Um, and then the city fire locations, which there are six locations, receiving twenty-five thousand dollars each.
A motion that fourteen, uh, fire companies receive the one point one million dollars from ARPA money.
I'll second.
Okay, the last, or the next item is, um, the economic development line and you guys had already voted to take that. And then that changes our, um, resolution. Um, we will put down that everything is approved except for the five hundred thousand and that is Resolution twenty twenty-two twelve. Right.
So it would be minus five hundred thousand?
It'd be one, one million, uh,
Three hundred.
Three hundred and eighty-three thousand thirty-five dollars.
Right.
And you're still not, we're transitioning to this, kind of putting all of those on the way. Are you now that we've done this for a few months, this is a good thing for you?
Yes, um, I think it's keeping most everything. I think this time was a little different just because I did it a couple of weeks early because of fair, I was out for a whole week. Um, I think everything is, as far as offices needing, um, requests, by them turning that in, I'm able to advertise it and then it's ready for you guys to vote on. The time that they actually present it to you, it makes things a little smoother than going on several months afterwards.
And I think we certainly, the, what you call cheat sheet and then obviously the resolution format is, I do still love, like, receiving even the scanned in, the specific request from each department. Obviously some department heads are better than others at writing, um, what the line item is or have to look it up, it's not in the world and I would suggest cashing what those, explanation of what those dollars are.
Do we have a resolution to board this one?
Yeah, if you consent, continue to send those.
Yeah, I normally try to scan those in on the same attachment where I send my advertisement.
Do we have a resolution to sign?
Yes.
Okay.
We just need a motion to...
A motion to approve the Resolution twelve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
And that is it as far as transfers.
Thing from the public.
Is Troy still here? Is the margin still here?
Yes, Troy is there.
Troy.
Would you like to talk about, this is the, what you, what Bobby, Bobby and I talked about?
Yeah.
Um, that what is needed with, with the, you know, within the county.
Um, I was, um, asked, actually I was approached by the Fair Board, similar in time line with talking to Judy and talking to Commissioner Little and, um, the subject of public access automatic defibrillators came up. Um, and, um, Jennifer's been on, on me here to get one at this building. That was the one thing we never did at this building if we did the renovation a couple of years ago. And there's a, as you all know, a significant amount of folks that couldn't build in our area from the public all hours of the day, evening. Um, using some of my past EMS contacts, um, I, I had an idea of a timeframe or a cost of trying to do that. But using the company or Cintas who actually maintains, and I shouldn't say maintains, who monitors the device that is located in the courthouse. Um, I started con, started a conversation with them and, um, the courthouse chose to purchase several years ago that device outright. So they did not opt, they did not opt for the, um, the maintenance agreement or the monthly service agreement. Sarah was mentioning that that has resulted in, oh, several hundreds of dollars of, most here recently, after, for the first time, I think, a battery replacement and fresh defibrillator pads that are done as needed based on the monthly inspection. So in other words, Cintas comes in, they do a monthly inspection. If the batteries are okay, if the defibrillator pads are in, in deep range, then they just leave a little certificate. They send Sarah a small bill and say, hey, we were here. Uh, if that battery or defibrillator pads need to be replaced, then that's several hundreds of dollars at the time of, of the replacement. And that device is anywhere between five and seven thousand dollars purchased outright. So with the, um, service agreement, newer technology is available every three years on a thirty-six month agreement. Um, it roughly comes out to about a hundred and twenty dollars per month for each device with no upfront cost for a thirty-six month term. And I asked them to give me a price using seven as the location number. And what that was is every county location, including the courthouse, to replace the aged device that is there, not on the monthly service agreement. And that would include the county highway, soil and water, it would include health department, it would include everything. So using that number of seven, and it could be less, it could be more depending upon whatever you decided to do. It's about thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand two hundred and forty dollars for the year for seven of those. And if you do the math and that comes up to about four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars each, that's, it's not a purchase price, but that's what, that's what the device cost is per unit, about forty-three twenty, which is by far a more cost-effective way to do that rather than to buy those outright. And that, that a hundred and twenty dollars a month per unit is inclusive with batteries, monthly inspections, the defibrillator pads, except in this case, when the battery needs to be replaced or the defibrillator pads need to be refreshed or renewed, there's no expense or there's no cost. Sarah doesn't depend on, it's all part of a hundred and twenty dollars a month per unit. So, and I apologize, I've got one copy of this. I'm happy to pass it around. I'll make copies of that before, before we leave.
Could you do a favor and just scan it and email it?
I just, send them the same thing you sent to me. I...
And I apologize, it wasn't I was excluding you, but I was, I was just following up on a request from Judy from, from our assault.
It came to my...
I think legally that knowing that it's been inspected once a month is not rare.
You know, I, I'm thinking, I get, I got the thinking after, they said there was none in the extension office out there and I got, so I contacted Troy and I said, do we have, where else do we have them in the, you know, then he said the courthouse. But the health department doesn't have it, the highway department doesn't have one, the, that, you know, we need one here. Here, you know, we should probably have one because there's meeting after meeting after meeting and it's here and a lot of people that are here, you know, at different times. And I got the thinking, maybe that is something that the county should think about having. You know, and so that's why I requested he look into this. Not that it, we need to act on it tonight, but it was something that you need to think about for budget.
The last, the last point I would, I would want to make though in, in support of the, the monthly maintenance agreement option is, um, as Ray just mentioned, I mean, that's done every month and it's guaranteed it'll perform if it's ever needed. If we were to purchase those outright and even if it came out where it's a few hundred dollars cheaper over the long run, whatever the math turned out to be, then someone has to still go and touch and feel every one of those every month. Make sure all the batteries are replaced, all the defibrillator pads are there so that if it ever is needed, it'll perform when needed. So I, I, I just, to me, the, the maintenance agreement, this seems like the most cost-effective and useful option.
I'm gonna email you a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
I just felt like that was something that we need to look at and why I wanted, you know, the kind of, because it, it does, it is questionable. You know, I mean, somebody needs it, they need it. And it kind of, and you were saying the one at the courthouse, even if it's greater or somebody could, could problem with other...
All of these are public access. I mean, they're all, they're all designed for the general public. They, they have voice instruction and they have colored crayon coded pictures and steps one, two, and three. Uh, you know, anybody can, even if you can't read, you can hear. If you can't hear, you can read.
You can even get an app on your phone that tells you where the whole Rad community...
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would, you know, that would be something, Bobby's, Bobby's got a... Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would, you know, that would be something, Bobby, Bobby's got a question.
We need to correlate this with John Chancstein. For those of you who don't know, he take, he has taken Kenny Jasper's job.
Yes.
So, anyway, we'll need some for the jail, larger footprint. But what brought this all about was the fair not having any. What's your thoughts on us having one mobile that we could let, like, the fair use, Neville's Row, Canaan? I mean, they should have access to them also.
They are mobile. I mean, it's literally, uh, it looks like Dan Lookers. So, they are mobile. I mean, I, I'm gonna get the one for my business and grab it right out of the, um, the box we keep it in and use it there or bring it over here because it's a great thing.
It's included with a, with a wall mounted, you know, case or whatever, but it's easily open. It could be opened and taken wherever it wants.
Then what, doesn't get back and you need it? I mean, that would be my luck. I'd have it in my car and somebody here would need it, so.
Yeah. I, I was saying, that you were, I have a good, that's a good idea that, you know, even at Canaan, the festival, any of the festivals, that it, something would be available to go, to be there. And I, I know they brought it up at, at the meeting following the fair that they said a number of people that was at that meeting said they are, have been trained on that too. So, that was a thought. You know, I'm not in this sense of that, but that just, that's when it popped into my head and I thought, we've got buildings that do not have this in it, that's county buildings.
I'll email you tomorrow too, because I got a couple, a couple of ideas on that.
Uh, and then just, while I'm standing here, I guess, real quick, um, just an update on two fifteen, LaGrange Road. Uh, that closing was held June twenty-seventh. Uh, possession is sixty days, which is August the twenty-seventh. Uh, we're working closely with the sellers, uh, where we will, um, we, we didn't want to encroach on their current business operations, which will end on Sunday, July thirty-first. So, we actually then will kind of start accessing the building for, you know, multiple purposes. But the primary purpose was at two o'clock in the morning, I had a epiphany that we were gonna be moving forty-plus pallets out of overhead doors to a building that only has a standard door in it. How I was gonna do that, so, um...
Oh, you'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure I will. But, you know, we're gonna try and expose those doors, you know, sooner rather than later and then we'll be trying to get that stuff done. So, a few little tricks that are still gonna have to be performed, but, but we're on schedule and on track.
And the, and the county, and the Fairgrounds has been, was notified and they had their sixty-day notice.
Fairgrounds was given their sixty-day notice and we told them that we would vacate those premises by August thirty-first.
And they have really helped us out.
Oh, they have been.
And I indicated that in my notice to them and thank them for this.
Yes, yes. It had helped us.
It was, it was, it was a plus for...
Win-win all the way.
And it helped them out too.
Yeah, win-win, win-win all the way around, yes.
Thank you.
And Heather, thank you for this extra little thing that you gave us.
Oh, yes.
Balance.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I, when you sent that and you, and of course, we've got a little more balance here, but I just thought, thank you. That, you know, I mean, we can add and subtract, but this was really...
I know, I saw that, thanks.
I like that. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome. Um, Sarah and I worked together. I ran numbers by her and I, what I had, what she had, make sure we were on the same page with everything. Um, other things going on that we have going on, I'll be contacting you guys soon. I think they are getting ready to close our second audit, so, um, I'm happy about that. Um, uh, I am preparing your guys' books. I'll be emailing you guys soon for pickups. Um, I have all County General and I'm just working on the other things hopefully by the end of the week. Have fun, ready?
Can't wait.
And I meet with DLGF next week on the twenty-ninth, I believe, to, um, set our advertisements. Um, I'm going to seek advice from him on a few things. Um, and then I received a fact book also, if any of you guys would like to check it out and take a look at it. Um, I did not, with all the auditing going on lately, I did not have time to participate in it, but other counties did, um, to compare those numbers for budgets. And I think that's about it.
All righty. Thank you for all your hard work.
No problem.
And your ladies, of course.
Yes. They are pretty awesome.
Motion to adjourn?
Got it, ready, second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.